Let the record show that all board members are present except Mrs. Francine Pratt this time. And I would ask Teresa Bledsoe to come to the front and introduce our Pledge of Allegiance speaker.
Thank you, Dr. Frederick. Good evening, board members, doctor gentlemen. This evening it is my honor to introduce Aspen Blevins. She's a 4th grader at Watkins Elementary School. And she is accompanied tonight by her mother Tammy in the front row and her principal Janine Forrester. Aspen was chosen to represent Watkins because she's a wonderful role model to others and has a positive contributor to the Watkins School community. Mrs. Forrester says that Aspen is a model student and exemplifies the school goals of being responsible, ready, and respectful. She's a hard worker and has excellent attendance, and her principal says she always has a smile on her face. And Aspen told me this evening that she has all As right now, so something to celebrate. So thank you, Aspen, for being a good example for other students, and I'd like to ask you all to stand as Aspen leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for spending your time this evening with us. We appreciate that, and congratulations, Mom. Okay, we'll move on now to, we have some individuals here that we want to honor excellence.
Exactly. First, I'd like to start by introducing you to Arie Acuff. She, if she'd come forward, please. Arie is a junior at Kickapoo High School, and she's accompanied by her coach Angela Odom. Last week, Arie took 2nd place in the Missouri State High School Activities Association Class 2 Girls Golf Championships, and she finished with a par 72. Last year, she advanced to the state tournament and placed 15th, so she's got a record there. And she says she's on track to be valedictorian of her class, so academic achiever and sports. So we'd like to congratulate Arie for her successes.[155.22][155.22](applause) Now, we'd like to recognize a group of several Central High School students. If you guys would come on forward. They're media students who have produced 2 award-winning films and have been invited to attend 2 prestigious film festivals. Earlier this month, the 2 student-produced films were screened at the All-American High School Film Festival in New York City. And as an official selection, their films were screened at the AMC Empire Theaters in Times Square. Their films were selected from, among thousands that were entered, from 48 states and 30 countries, so some tough competition there. The 2 films were "Behind the High," which is a drug documentary that they created for Community Partnership of the Ozarks, and Sharon Lee, Kiran Hall, and Sabrina Ellis and Cindy Weber worked on that video, so they raised their hands so you can see them. And then the second video was called "The Election," and it is an IBM film created by Aviva Okusen Haberman, Emma Crosswhite, and Allison Seko. Then, this summer, Kiran and Sidney, Sharon, Tabitha Varvel, Angel Dino, and Chase Eckley were invited to represent Central at the Telluride Film Festival. And each year, 2 schools are selected in the nation and chosen to attend the film festival where they can screen films that we hear about in the media and meet actors, directors, producers such as Meryl Streep, Rachel McAdams, Michael Keaton, and Davis Guggenheim. So I'm sure they were rubbing elbows with some interesting people in Telluride. Their teacher, Josh Cantrell, is here with us tonight, so if you have any questions you'd like to ask him or the students, I'm sure they would be happy to tell you about their experiences. Any questions?
Hey, questions, board members? Anyone have any questions, comments? We're extremely proud of you, and we're in awe of what you've accomplished to date. How many of you plan on looking at a career in your area of interest? Yeah?
All.
Excellent.
It will look great on your resumes.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for being here. We're very proud of you, very excited for your accomplishments. Do you still have more things ahead? Yes. So we might see you again, some of you. How many juniors? Okay. And seniors? Sophomores? Oh, good.
Great.
What?
No, I graduated last year.
I was waiting on you.
I'm even more impressed at your graduation.
Very happy you came back. I'm sure they could use your experience and expertise, advice, once in a while, so thank you. Thank you so much. Don't join me.[347.31][347.31](applause) One thing I wanted to go back, I didn't get to say anything to Arie. Congratulations, that's awesome. I hope that sometime you might be available as a scrambles partner. So anyway, thank you so much for being here.
Tonight, we have a lot to celebrate, so I'll finish up by formally announcing our 2015 Springfield Public Schools Hall of Fame inductees. During a luncheon event on Thursday, we will induct 3 outstanding SPS alumni into the Hall of Fame. And as of today, it's a sold-out event, so I think that demonstrates to us how well-respected these individuals are. Our first inductee is Stephen Edwards. He graduated from Glendale High School in 1984. Mr. Edwards is president and CEO of Cox Health. He started out working as a groundskeeper at Cox when he was in high school, and in 2006, achieved a goal he set in college of becoming a CEO. He has been instrumental in some of the initiatives that have contributed to making Cox Health one of the nation's top 100 hospitals. Dr. Anthony Levacek is a 1992 graduate of Kickapoo High School, and he is a pediatric cardiologist and serves as an associate professor of pediatrics and radiology at the Medical University of South Carolina. His mission to meet the needs of children expanded beyond the walls of the hospital when, in 2006, he and his family began traveling to Haiti and serving the health and medical needs of students there, of children there in orphanages. Finally, one of our own, retiree Susan Everett Provance. She graduated from Glendale High School in 1971, and her love for sports turned into a career and passion for providing Springfield youth a variety of opportunities to participate in sports and athletics. After serving 26 years as a teacher at Glendale, a teacher and coach at Glendale High, I'm sorry, at Parkview High School, she's a graduate of Glendale, so she represents 2 schools. She went on for a second career with the Springfield-Green County Park Board where she was able to broaden the opportunities for students to participate in sports and activities like archery, tennis, team-building, volleyball. And before I close, I would like to mention a few of our generous sponsors who helped make this event possible. 417 Magazine is our presenting sponsor, and the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools is a platinum sponsor. And then we have a number of other sponsors who contribute to this event to allow us to bring students and allow them to participate and underwrite the cost of the luncheon. So we'd like to acknowledge Adsmith Marketing and Advertising, Cox Health, KY3, Maddox New Prater, Esther Lee Schneider &amp; Associates, Springfield-Green County Park Board, Positronic, Bull's Trophy House, Drew University, Men Missouri Bank, Ozarks Coca-Cola Dr. Pepper Bottling Company, Springfield Area Chamber of Commerce, and Liberty Press. So we're excited about that event on Thursday, and know several of you will be able to attend. We're looking forward to finally inducting these individuals and showing the highlight videos about their lives. They're very touching and inspiring this year, so we look forward to that and hope you can all make it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Okay. And that will be Thursday, right?
Correct. Noon at the White River Conference Center.
Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry about that.[571.79][571.79](laughter) My chair's at the right height, I had to do something else.
Listen, I'm waiting, isn't it?
Fair enough. And that is a great transition now to the business aspect of our meeting. And at this time, I need a motion to approve the agenda for the Tuesday, October 20 Board of Education Regular Session Meeting. So do I have a motion?
Shall we?
Thank you. Annie Bush, and do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Bruce Renner. And we will need to vote.
This is very loud today. I wouldn't like it.
Yeah, they can hear you.
Who is in charge of this thing, for real? It is too loud. I get to whisper to him occasionally, you all get to know.
Right?
Right.
Okay, I think we, did we all vote?
Yeah.
I love it. Okay, very good. Motion carries. We'll now move to public comments to address agenda items. Mrs. Loon, do we have any public comments this evening? We do not. Okay. We'll move right on to our consent agenda items. It is typical for the board to put Consent Agenda Minutes 3.01 and 4.01, Contracts, Agreements, and Change Orders, and 5.01 Personnel Elections, Promotions, Terminations, Employee Compensation Plan, Changes, All Consent Agenda, vote at one time. So, at this time, do I have a motion that the board approves Consent Agenda 3.01, 4.01, and 5.01?
Shall we?
Thank you. Tim Rosenberry, and I, a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Jerry Lee. So at this time, we'll vote on those items. And for those of you that may be not familiar with that process, we looked at all those items at our study session 2 weeks ago, had the opportunity to ask questions, to get additional information if needed, and then tonight we take action by voting on those. Moving on, we are now at 6.01 on our Agenda Item Treasures Report. Ms. Embry, come before us with some great information.
Oh, absolutely wonderful information. You will note that we have a number of items posted for your approval this evening under the Treasures Report. I think there are 13 different documents, but they represent hundreds of pages of information. And I appreciate the board members with whom I've had opportunity to engage over the past couple of weeks, some of you more so than others, but it's all been great conversation and appreciate that opportunity. This evening, not only are we back on track, providing you with the regular Treasures Reports and the Treasures Highlight Information as well, we also have included the budget alignment information that we promised to you for many months since June, when you originally approved the budget. Excuse me. And the main message I would share with you this evening is that, once again, we are providing for you a balanced operating budget. That is great news for our system. And within the information, you'll note that the total expenditures include $426,566,744. And the total revenue for all funds is $312,468,269. Now, included within the expenditures would be debt service, a special escrow payment will take place this year, and that is noted in the highlights as well. I want you to know that, over the course of the past several months, we've had opportunity to have multiple meetings, and part of the conversation was that we were waiting for Dr. Dawson to join the team so that he could then work through some of the realignment process with his team members, and that work has taken place. Just know that we are not finished. The budget development is an ongoing process, and we'll continue to look for efficiencies within the system and bring to you changes as those are made available. We also will be starting this process again very soon, in January, actually. We'll start for the next year, so again, it is an ever-continuing process. I do want to just highlight for you with regard to the regular Treasures Report, if I can operate the system here, just to point out a couple of items of interest. In the budget alignment highlight, we do have, excuse me, there we go, I'm showing for you here this evening the projected revenue for operating funds. And again, that's not all funds, but the operating funds represents what it takes to run our system in terms of payroll, supplies, the food for the kitchens, for the students, that type of thing, fuel for buses. And within this information, you note that we have 61.25% of our support comes from local sources, and included within that local revenue is the current tax piece of that, and that represents 48% of all of the revenue generated. Recall that in August, you approved the tax levy on which this calculation is made, and we did enjoy an increase to our assessed valuation this year of 4.9268%, and that was great news in our system, an indicator not only for additional revenue for our system but also the increased growth in the economy, which is great for Springfield. The other major revenue for our operating funds is the state, and you'll note that overall, state is 27.12%, but the basic formula and classroom trust fund piece of that, and that is driven by attendance and student counts, represents 23% of our operating budget. So those are our 2 primary revenue sources. On the expenditure side, again, we are always hovering close to that 80% threshold with regard to salary and benefits, representing the bulk of our operating budget. This shows 79.13% after all of our salary and benefit new projections were made, once all staff members were in place, and that is typical in public education and probably many organizations, that 80% of your operating budget would rest in salary and benefits. Again, the rest of it is fuel for buses, food for cafeterias, and supplies in classrooms, that type of thing, and also some consulting work. So here's the great news. This shows our operating fund balance percentage trend, and this is the measure that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education focuses on when we provide our annual report each year to the state. And you'll note that we ended in 2014, that would be June 30, 2014, at a 17%, and we are currently still showing this as estimated for 2015 at 16.96%. That's simply because the audit is not complete. We anticipate bringing that report to you at the December meeting. Once that's finalized, it will no longer show that as estimated, but 16.96%. And this newly-aligned budget is still holding strong at that 16.9 range, 16.94%, so .02 of a percent is the change that we're presenting for you this evening. The other thing I would highlight for you, and you may recall, we had the technology lease that was part of our June 30 budget that was approved. Some of the movement that you see within the numbers this evening shows where we reduced the lease payment, which is a required fund for expenditure, shifted that over to the incidental fund or one of the operating funds, and we made some direct purchases, borrowed less money. That's one of the primary changes. We also have, as mentioned, realigned to all the actual salary and benefits that were locked down with our September 30 payroll. That's the first payroll of each fiscal year where all employees are included in the payroll data. So, again, that zero-based budgeting approach will continue throughout the system, and we'll continue to bring forward new ideas for ways that we can operate more efficiently and also recognize the good work that's already taking place in the process. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I do appreciate the narrative that goes along with the budget, and particularly the comparison of revenues and expenses with the highlights. It's very helpful to see what are the major changes and why. Very, very helpful, and glad to see that our operating fund balance is maintaining its level. So I think you've come a long way from where we were, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And I just had one comment, kind of question. You mentioned that our audit will be complete in December.
Correct.
And so I'm guessing, but you'll have to help me with this, that will assist you considerably whenever you get ready for budgeting.
Well, to be perfectly frank, by the time the audit wraps up, we have moved on. There's always something to be learned through an audit process, and our staff members certainly appreciated learning new things this year. We had a new auditor in the system, and that, there was a lot of additional energy invested in reviewing data. So there is a great deal to be learned, but in terms of preparing for the next year's budget, that work is being maintained by staff members.
And you're going to bring that report to us in December, is correct?
That the audit report will be in December.
I may be getting off track, but I know I spent quite a bit of time with them, and they were very thorough with the questions.
Yes, they are very thorough, yes. And then we will start actually providing you with some preliminary budget information at the January meeting.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. For those of you that might have looked at the board docs, you'll note that Ms. Embry loaded about, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 15 or 16 documents for us to keep us updated on budget.
Entertained.
A lot of work. Thank you.
Great team making that work happen. Thank you.
We'll move on to our information reports, and we will hear from Ms. Went regarding...
We didn't vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you put it back up?
Back a screen.
So. And I even have that in my notes, I just moved right on by that. So the floor is now with questions and discussion. Do you have a motion the board approves the October 20 Treasures Report as presented?
Shall we move?
Thank you. We have a motion by Annie Bush and a second by Jill Patterson, and at this time, we need to vote. And Ms. Went's up there, ready to go, as we move on to our information reports on our 2013 Bond Projects Quarterly Status Report.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share an update on our 2013 Bond Projects. Attached is the full report, which goes into much more detail and many more pictures to give you information, but this evening, I would like to go ahead and touch on some of the highlights from our projects. As we first look at our Fremont project, just to give you a snapshot of the layout of what the project is to be as we work through the construction. This photo here is actually the new slab area, which is being poured for the kitchen, which is right behind the existing all-purpose room. Here's another angle from it. In the background, you can see the precast panels, which is for the gymnasium inside the gym, so the gym's already up as far as that, and the concrete twin tees across the roof there. On the roof, we have, it's already dried in, and they're putting the insulation on the roof. Inside, this is the all-purpose room inside, and you can see along the left side of the photo that the corridor wall has been opened up as we start opening up different areas within the existing building. This was actually, previously was multiple classrooms that have now been opened up. You can see some of the new, wider opening areas that will spill out into more collaboration spaces. Behind the plywood will be additional collaboration space as well. And just to mention, on the Fremont project, we did have kind of a slow, rocky start with that project, but to say that fortunately with the, working with the contractor, the project architect, and our project manager, we've been able to get that project back on track, and so we're back on schedule, and the weather has definitely been a help in that as well. As we look at the Glendale project, it's basically complete. We did run into a couple of issues after completion with the project that we're fine-tuning and working out. Some of that is related to pneumatic lines for our heating system in the building, and some also with some of the mastic that was used in laying down some of the quartz floor tiles, so we're resolving that. Other than that, we're just in the closeout document stage to close this project out. As we look at Hickory Hills, Hickory Hills, we're looking at closing that project out, also with closeout documents and some final FF&amp;E that's coming in on that project. But here, you can see inside the new space, as you enter into it, photos here, you can see how the new space, you can see how the walls open up. They can be used as whiteboards or for other projects that the students work on. We also have the different type of furniture that you see where they're able to switch that around very easily to form different types of learning spaces. And now, as we look at Kickapoo, Phase 1A and 1B are basically complete, we're closing that out, and then we're looking at the auditorium, which is Phase 2 of the Kickapoo project. You can see the concrete that's in there as part of the seating will go up into the back of the auditorium area. This is actually as if you were standing on the stage overlooking the orchestra pit up into the seats, the stage area. This is the steel that's been erected for the new east entrance, and then also as it comes around to that corridor connecting to the new auditorium space. This was an additional, or a special crane was brought in just for setting the concrete twin tees on the top of it because of the distance they had to reach and the span, so an extremely large crane was brought in for that project, for that portion of the project. This slide is actually the backstage area, where there's also a shop as well, where the sets are built and brought into the stage area. The project is still slated for completion in the end of April, May range for that project. As we look at Sherwood, this photo actually is a photo from a drone that was done by the architect. The rest of the photos for the Sherwood project were professionally done, but just to show how the completion of the project looks here as we're going through closeout documents for this project. It's turned out very nicely. And the last slide with Sherwood is actually of the Boys and Girls Club Edition portion of the Sherwood Building. I would like to mention that 2 projects, both the Kickapoo Phase 1B and the Sherwood projects, were actually nominated as Projects of the Year for the Springfield Contractors Association, and later this week, a determination will be made if one of those projects receives that award, and it's a team award, which involves the owner, the contractor, and the architect. So we're pleased that our projects made that list. As we look at the Sunshine Office Building, a lot of activity going on there at Sunshine. The furniture assembly is taking place now throughout the office area. So a lot of cardboard. Things are just all over right now as they're being assembled and put into their correct This is one of the larger conference rooms, which could be used as a small training room, but also is needed for some of our larger IEP meetings that take place. On the exterior, we have the concrete, work is done for the parking lot, there is some drain work still to take place, and then pending weather, they anticipate starting to lay the asphalt at the beginning of next week. We actually have a schedule that we've been working off of for this project. I won't read into all the details, but basically, starting November 9th through the 20th is when all the moves take place, and so everybody's gearing up for that and a lot of work, and I just want to thank a lot of the staff that has been going through really trying to scale back and clean up records and do those types of things. A lot of pre-work has been done, so we really appreciate their efforts for that. And with that, I would answer any questions that you might have. And with that, I would answer any questions that you might have.
Excited to see Sunshine Building. Any questions or comments? Great. Thank you very much.
Great work.
Okay, move on to 7.02, our Ignite update. Dr. Hackenworth.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to bring to you an update from the work that we've done over the last eight months or so with Ignite. We've had some great shifts and we're excited to be able to bring some of that to you tonight to share. I'm going to start off the way I always do and revisit what Ignite is and what Ignite is not. It's about authentic engagement. It's about real relevance, personalized learning, and it's about equity. And we believe we're seeing those things in the system as we've progressed in just the last few months. What Ignite is not, it is not a replacement for teachers. We have seen teachers excel so far in this initiative and it has really amplified some really, really amazing teaching. It's not used every day. There are key times we use that technology. It's designed, not designed to decrease face-to-face communication. We've seen wonderful collaboration as we brought this initiative to our sites. It's not just another thing for teachers to do. In fact, they've embraced it. It's become part of what they do every day. And we know that this isn't the answer to everything, but it's certainly a step in the right direction for us. Originally, when we began talking about Ignite, I think I mentioned to you that it would involve some real cultural shifts, instructional shifts, some really targeted support for our teachers and our students and the right sort of access. And I think tonight, you're going to see that these things are all happening and some real examples of these shifts actually taking place in our system. So, really three things tonight that we want to touch on. We have gone through our second round of data collection through our Bright Bites partnership. And as you recall, that's an analytics company that helps us collect data around readiness. And now, we're able to actually look at some progress based on our original round of data. We're going to give you some information about where we're at with our year one schools and how they are progressing. And then finally, we're pleased to announce year two and year three schools and begin our work with those schools. Just another note, we've been doing some exciting work at Hillcrest in our device selection and testing access for students. So, next month, we're actually going to bring some students to you and talk a little bit about the work we've been doing kind of in that space as well. Tonight, Bruce Douglas and Nicole Lemon are going to join me and they're going to help us walk through this presentation for you. So, Bruce?
I'm excited tonight to be able to give you an update around Bright Bites. Again, it's that data analytics around instruction and technology and the integration of the two and making sure we really provide great experiences for our students. So, Bright Bites receives data through a survey. And we did a two-week window where we surveyed teachers, students, leaders and parents. And we are really thrilled to say that we received almost 17,700 responses through that survey. And just to give you an idea, in the spring, we received about 13,000. And so, we saw a really big jump. Part of that was we did, for the first time, survey our parents. So, we had about 1,700 parents that responded to the survey, which we're obviously very thrilled about. The other big jump that we saw was actually at our high schools. So, we had almost 3,000 additional high school students take the survey this round. So, I really want to recognize our high schools for being very strategic about getting students through the survey to make sure we get the best data possible off of this survey. So, looking back at what Bright Bites provides us, this is the dashboard that we presented in the spring at the May session. So, this is what it looked like in May when we got our first round back. You'll recall that it's broken into four domains. So, they use what's called the case framework. And that's classroom, access, skills and environment. So, those are the four major domains that they measure through this survey. They also provide us an overall composite score, so that technology and learning score at the very top of this dashboard here. And so, in May, we had a composite score of 1053. And I'm not going to flip back and forth just because that's going to be awkward, but our overall score here was 1064. And so, in talking with Bright Bites this last week around what should we be looking for? You know, what's an acceptable growth? Should we be really thrilled by this? And in talking with our representative, she said that in general, they see a five to eight point jump in the surveys. And we saw an 11-point jump. So, we are really thrilled about that, especially because this jump is just over the start of the school year. So, we've really only been in school for a couple of months and started to make really big shifts already. Off of the spring survey, we identified two major focus areas for the district. So, the first focus area was digital citizenship. We saw that was really low-hanging fruit that we needed to start addressing. The second focus area was online student collaboration. So, we felt that we were in a position to start affecting both of those across the entire system. So, looking at that first focus area of digital citizenship, here is just one of the metrics that comes out of Bright Bites. The way to read this chart is you have the strike bars, which is going to be May, and then the solid bars is our current status as of September. So, we can see we've already shifted about 20% of our teachers that they no longer teach this. So, we've started to see some shift here. Obviously, this isn't exactly where we want the end goal to be. But in just a couple of months, we've started to have our teachers teaching this much more often in their classrooms. So, we're really excited to see that shift across the district.
Can I ask a quick question, Chris? Before, afraid if you move on, I'm going to forget what I want to ask you. But in order to identify this as a focus, were there several questions asked on the survey that led you to this, selection of this as a focus area? I mean, so, or was it just a series of questions or one question that came back that was not where you wanted it to be and why you chose this?
So, for us to select it as a focus area, it was off of the return of the survey and looking over the data and what we saw in different areas. The survey itself is developed by Bright Bites. And they have many different ways of accessing these pieces. So, it's usually not a single question, but multiple questions added together. And so, they come up with this overall metric to provide this data back to us.
Thank you.
So, the other focus area that we identified in the spring was asking students to collaborate online with classmates. And we see a really large jump here. We attribute this to a couple of different reasons. So, one was actually the curriculum adoption of StudySync. And along with that, we pushed out 1,800 Chromebooks into our secondary sites. And so, in all of our middle school and high school English Language Arts classrooms, they've been utilizing technology over the first two months of the school year. And I think it really speaks to this major jump here. The other piece that we attribute it to is a focus support around Google Docs and Canvas, our learning management system. So, we've seen a huge interest in utilizing this and collaborating on digital writing and various other areas that Google Docs really allows students to just excel with. So, we see a really huge shift here of students every week starting to collaborate online using digital tools. So, we're thrilled by the progress here. The next metric that I bring forward to you is actually off of the parent side. So, we had over 1,600 parents complete the survey. What we saw was really pockets of that throughout the district. So, what we've really learned is we have to be very strategic about how we get parent engagement. And we had some sites that had several hundred that completed the survey. We had some sites that had very, very few. So, what we know for the spring is we need to engage all of those sites that really nailed it in the fall so we can be much more strategic in the spring and get, I think, a much higher response rate in the spring.
Can you give us an example of how you reached out to parents or how parents were, or how the survey was made available to parents?
Yeah. So, as a district, we put the parent survey on every school's website. Beyond that, we asked every leader to share it out over social media, so Facebook, Twitter, various other avenues there. Where we saw our biggest collection points were actually places that had open house. And they encouraged the parents to do it while they're at open house. Other sites actually incentivize their students. Go home, get with mom and dad, get them to do the survey and we're going to have a fun day the next day. So, what we pulled out of here from the parents is right in line with where we're heading as a district. And that's that parents really believe technology use in classroom can enhance student learning. So, 90% of our parents believe that. And I think that is just outstanding as a community where we're at currently with this. So, now I get to brag a little bit on Ignite. So, Bright Bites actually allows us to pull a dashboard out just for our Ignite schools. And so, that's what this dashboard here is showing us. And it provides us that overall score again. And the overall score for our Ignite year one schools is 1082. And so, here's what that comparison kind of looks like. So, even over the growth that we saw across the district, we saw the Ignite schools really leading the pack. And so, we are just thrilled to death about how they are progressing, how they're growing the system as a whole. And I just want to recognize a few of the schools that had some really great growth. So, Debbie Greger over at Reed had the highest with 44 points. Dr. Shree Norman at Cowden had 42 points. Mr. Josh Hull over at Portland, another 42 points. And Ms. Nicole Kimbrough over at Sherwood had 40 points. And across all of the Ignite year one sites, we saw an average growth of 25 points, which the feedback that we got from Bright Bites is that that's really amazing. And we see that they are probably the ones that are really pushing the district forward. So, we're absolutely thrilled about the results we're seeing out of Ignite, the different support models that we've put out there. And that's actually where the next part of the presentation is going to take us. So, do you have any questions around Bright Bites before we move into kind of learning about year one? Yeah, yeah. They are doing wonderful things at those sites, so. Well, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Nicole Lemon.
I'm a little bit shorter, so I'll skip that then. I'm excited to talk to you about the stories behind the numbers. So, what we've seen this year is a focus on support. And I think that would be the key word that I would use. So, I just want to talk through some of the different support structures that we have in place. So, I know many of you joined us for the kickoff event and I think that really set the tone. So, I'm Dr. Dawson and Dr. Jungman kicked off our whole Ignite initiative, reminding teachers that we were building the plane as we were flying it. And we use that analogy a lot. And I think teachers feel safe that we admit we're doing this for the first time with you. And so, that makes it this learning journey together. So, the kickoff also had teachers go through may do's and must do's. They had voice and choice in their learning. So, they really got to experience the blended environment. Each month, we do leadership collaborations with our Ignite principals. And we actually do those right before they go into their senior leadership meetings with Dr. Jungman. And those are amazing because it's principals learning from other principals. So, they share ideas, they share what's working, they share strategies for success. And that's been a great piece of our puzzle. Each building has an onsite blended learning specialist that is in their building at least one full day a week. If they're a secondary site, they have that specialist two days a week. So, that specialist goes classroom by classroom, working in team meetings, working with teachers, leading that initiative in the building and really making the difference. Each school also has blended learning mentors that we stipend. So, it ranges based on the FTE in that building, anywhere from two mentors to five mentors. And I love our mentors because they are the ones that get it. They're really telling the teachers, you know, Nicole may say it works this way, I'm telling you, I have made it work this way in my classroom. So, those are people that we really lean on and that we look to be our teacher leaders. And I think one of our favorite events is our Appy Hour and you're always welcome to come. So, Appy Hour is held quarterly and it's actually led by teachers. So, they come in and they share ideas and strategies with each other and we just sit back and watch. And I think the power of that is told in stories every day. I was at Cowden yesterday and a teacher, "I learned how to do this at Appy Hour and I'm doing it now." And I never would have been able to do it without that event. And those are completely optional. So, those are teachers coming because they want to learn more. And we had over 100 teachers just show up because they wanted to be there. We're also seeing a huge uptick in our online tutorials. So, we are seeing schools that aren't even Ignite schools who are saying, "We want to learn more." And so, they're going into Canvas and following their own learning path. And then, Ignite, our hashtag #IgniteSPS is a great place to learn. And we hear teachers saying, "I saw this idea on Twitter" or "I got this idea here." So, if you aren't following the hashtag, our teachers are. And it's a great way that they're sharing ideas with each other. So, one of the pieces of data out of Bright Bites that I thought was really interesting was a number of teachers who are now also taking responsibility or their ownership of their own PD. So, they're saying, "I want to learn more about this and I'm spending my own time to explore learning about tech-related topics." So, again, that passion is out there even without us having to hold district events. So, I want to remind you that we first came to you with Ignite in May. So, we've come a long way since then. It's been a very fast and fun six months. As of today, we've deployed seven full elementary schools. We have all of our model classrooms at the elementary level out and secondary will finish over the next few weeks. And as Dr. Hackenworth mentioned, we have finished our high school device pilot. I can't wait to bring those Hillcrest students to you next month. It was probably one of my favorite projects that I've ever had a chance to work on. And hearing kids who don't have internet access get hotspots and how it's changed their family is a pretty incredible story. So, pretty passionate around that access issue and I'm excited for you to hear from those kids. So, one of the other things that we do each week at our Ignite schools is we have what are called our project teams. So, our project teams have all of these people sitting at the table. So, the specialist, someone from IT, someone from professional learning, someone from curriculum, the principal. Many of our schools that are titled have a coach or a PYP coordinator there. The instructional technologist is sitting there and the librarian is sitting there. And they're having conversations about how we move this initiative forward. So, we meet for an hour every week. It's a huge time commitment. But I can tell you that we're hearing, you know, "This is great. Every voice is there." We can talk about the issues that are going on and solve them as a team. So, this is one of the ways I think that those Bright Byte numbers are moving really quickly because if there's an issue, we go right to the person who can solve it and get that teacher the support they need. So, you're always welcome to come to your project team. Ask and I'll send you the times. So, just by the numbers where we are, we've already deployed about 1,750 student devices. That does not count staff devices at this time, which we've deployed a lot of those too. So, just focusing on the student side and we'll push out 5,800 by January 4th. So, it's been pretty fast and furious. And I just want to take a second to really recognize the work that Bruce is doing in the IT department. If you want to see just an amazing amount of teamwork, go to GSC right now. There's always somebody imaging machine and giving, you know, getting them ready to go out to kids and getting them in carts. Every device is tagged with a kid's name. So, when they get it, their name is on it. It's their device and there's nothing better than watching those kids get those devices, opening them, the sound that they make. Ah, they make the same sound every time. So, that wouldn't absolutely not have happened without the processes that IT has been able to quickly implement, put into place and get the devices out to students. So, I wanted to recognize that as well. So, each week, we push a video out to you, which is also one of the highlights. If you've ever seen Andy in our department, he's a tall awkward kid running around with cameras. Poor Andy. He is. He is. He'll say it.
That's on record.
I know. You can tell by his face. He does a great job and I'm sure you appreciate his music selections. But we're going to show you just a little bit of what we've been doing for the last few months, so.
A lot has changed over the past year.
I think the term Ignite is absolutely perfect. Because what we're doing, we're...
It's like the old buffering base. Get to watch it. I try to reload this and see if it gets better.
A lot has changed over the past year.
I think the term Ignite is absolutely perfect. Because what we're doing, we're igniting the future for these kids.
The sky is the limit. I mean, if we can imagine it, if the students can imagine it, then we can create it.
Every student can work on something that's at their level. No one's wasting their time. They're getting exactly what they need.
The opportunities are endless. I mean, we now have every student that's having access to a device. And I think we're just going to see this grow exponentially from here.
Children are so happy in the environment and engagement is off the charts.
I'm most excited about empowering my students with the ability not only to learn along with me, but then to go out and show other kiddos and other teachers how to use those devices.
I feel like as a teacher, it's our responsibility to always be that model, especially to new teachers who are trying to try it out, teachers who are unsure, but what is this about? teachers who are trying to try it out, teachers who are unsure, but what is this about? What is Ignite about? What is blended learning about?
These teachers are sort of trailblazing every day with kind of some new ideas on how a classroom should look, what their teaching should look like and sound like, and what learning should look like and sound like.
I'm just excited to dive in and start really getting my kids involved and engaged in their learning and stuff that they're excited about learning.
My teacher can just say, "Oh, let's go online and do iReady, Lexia, or Alex," and we not have to worry about going down and getting the cart anymore because it's in our room.
We're one-to-one here, and so I have 22 students, and they each have their very own, so it's going to be completely personalized just for them.
It feels like a magical day.
They love it. The kids love it, the parents love it. Me, the teacher, was amazing. I heard so much positive feedback.
It's user-friendly. I love the fact that I can check up on her, I can see how she's doing, and then of course, myself and the teacher can share a joint collaboration between her learning experience.
And we just had one student in, and she said, "I don't want to hurt your feelings, but I really like this much better than last year."
There is going to be no boundary on what these kids are capable of doing.
Thank you for setting all this up, you know, working hours, days, weeks, and years just to get this set up for us. I think the people that are doing this are very nice.
If only he knew it was just since May, right? He believes in us, so. Thanks for reading the spark each week and following along with the videos. Again, I think it's been fun to watch the process and hear the student voices, so. Now it's time for Years Two and Three, so just as a reminder, we use three criteria when selecting those sites, so their Bright Byte scores does play a role in that, but it is not the only factor. We do look at equity across the system, so making sure that we are reaching all of our students. We also look at how many devices they already have in their building and where the greatest need is. It's also about capacity, so it's really important to us that we continue the high level of support we've been able to provide and satisfaction with our staff. So keeping those sites at levels that we can continue to support is also important. So our Year Two elementary schools will be Bisset, Fremont, Pittman, Sequoia, Weaver, Wilson's Creek, Disney, Jeffries, Roundtree, Watkins, and Waller. Our Year Two secondary sites will be Carver, Jarrett, Westport, Central, Glendale, and we will also serve two of our alternative sites, Studi and SOS. There's a great need with those students, so we'll be working with those sites as well. So I'd like to thank Jill and QIA Department for helping us heat map these once again. So we did this for you last year, so you could see how we are hitting across the system. So the black dots represent the sites, so you can see that we've been able to spread the Ignite Initiative out across the city for Year Two. And so our Year Three sites are Bingham, Delaware, Mann, McGregor, Truman, Williams, Campbell, Gray, McBride, Roberson, and Twain. And our Year Three secondary sites are Pershing, Pipkin, Pleasant View, Kikapoo, and Parkview. And again, you will see the heat map on our Year Three sites as well. So what's next? We're just going to continue doing what we're doing. We have two more, three more elementary deployments to go, and then we'll start with our secondary deployment. So I think Bill Powers is here, but he'll go first. So that will be a great, a great day for that site, and we're just going to continue to support. Year Two, we will start doing model classrooms and as soon as we get back from those deployments. So we'll start pushing in to our Year Two buildings. It is not ideal to have a model classroom that's up for four weeks. That's not very model-esque. So our goal is, is to actually have model classrooms this spring that then deploy to the whole building in the fall, so they'll have a full semester to watch and learn from those teachers. Year Three sites will receive refurbished devices from Year One sites beginning in just a few weeks. So we will push a lot of devices into Year Three sites to supplement them until they receive the initiative. So that is our update tonight, and we'll take any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions or comments? So I, anyone? Do you have a question? Annie, did you have a question? Comment? Okay. So in support of Year Two and Year Three deployment, which we understand there's a financial piece to that, will we also expect to see, which I can't imagine how you do this without, additional support staff? I mean, are you going to need more kind of boots on the ground? In other words, more people out supporting these schools?
Yes, we will.
Okay. So we will see an ask for more support?
Is that a yes please?
Yes, please.
Because I can't imagine you doing this Year Two and Three without additional.
We'll ask politely, but yes, please.
Well, then we'll be expecting that ask.
Thank you.
I'll be just saying that you have done an amazing job. It's exciting to see the acceptance and, and how well it's gone with very few problems, at least that we have seen. So thanks, thanks to all of you who've worked so hard to make this happen.
And there's a lot of people. I mean, obviously, you can't do this with just our team. So it's been a, a journey, but I, I think we all say we've never worked harder, but we've never had more fun. So giving kids devices and working through this with teachers has been a great experience.
So I'll also tell you, the kids know when it's coming too. They're paying a lot of attention.
Good. Yeah.
I think what's exciting about this for me is that, that there's a real sense of mission within the district going on. It's evident by your small staff and what you guys are doing and the energy that you're bringing to just about any room that you walk into, it seems like. And it's, it's, it's wonderful to see that. And I know that, I know that it's, that this has been a huge effort. I appreciate what you've done. I encourage you to keep going as long as your bodies hold out. One, one piece for me as a patron of the district is seeing, is these videos. The way you're communicating your story, the way you're telling your story to those of us who are not deep in the trenches is really effective. And it's a, Ignite may be a model for many things, but it's also a model for that. And I just, I just think the whole, this whole system within a system that's going on with Ignite, and I don't mean school system, I'm talking about an operating system, is just, is just fascinating to see, and I think it's bringing a lot of energy to other initiatives of the district. So congratulations, and keep going. It's wonderful.
And last comment I would have is at any time when you have a student tell you that his or her learning was magical. It's pretty magical. So we, again, so as, to follow up with what Tim said, extremely proud of where this district's going and very excited, and know that it hasn't happened without a tremendous amount of hard work and planning on your part, and you're, you and everyone involved. When I say you, I mean everyone involved, so thank you for all that hard work. And any other?
I just, I just...
Come on up.
...do the limit once or twice, and it has this feeling of move that bus. You know, like move that bus, and then this magical thing happens. That's what's happening throughout the system, but it's really, when Dr. Jungman came, it's about breaking down silos. And so this is being done with lots of departments and lots of people. So you've got professional learning and blended learning and learning support, and you've got administrators and teachers and all kinds of people leading this initiative. And so it's probably the best example for professional adult collaboration that we have going on in the district. So I just want to thank them and commend them for this effort for being intentional. That's really what it's about. But it's also a huge, bold step for all of you to be, have the courage to say, "Move that bus." Let's do something different, and let's make it work. And so you're the ones on the front line in the community probably saying, "Okay, we have to trust them that they're doing this right." And so I just want you to know that these adults are way committed and dedicated to doing this right, and we want to thank you for your support for allowing them to do that job. So thank you very much. Good job. Good job.
Thank you. Very exciting report. Yeah, we'll move on to something else equally exciting. Board policy adoptions and revisions. Board policy.
This will be much shorter.
Yeah. Yeah. Two board policy adoption revisions were brought to us at our study session, October 6th, and we've had an opportunity to ask questions, to do additional research if necessary on these two particular policies. So at this time, anyone has any last minute questions, comments about the board policies? If not, then I will ask for a motion that the board approves Policy BBB and BBBA. Bruce Renner, motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Annie Bush. So at this time, we'll vote, and again, we'll thank Mr. Renner for his work on helping with our adoption and revision process. Said Mr.? Okay, we're moving on to new business, board member resignation. At this time, we do have Mrs. Pratt's letter of resignation before us. It's part of our board docs. And due to personal reasons, those of, most of us are aware of those reasons, since there's been an article in the News Leader, and we have had communication with Mrs. Pratt. She is resigning from the school board immediate, effective immediately. And along with that, we have copies of our board policy BBC, BBE regarding the resignation of a board member and the next steps. So at this time, I guess I'm asking for a motion that the board accepts Mrs. Francine Pratt's resignation from the school board, effective immediately. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? A motion by Ms. Jerry Lee. Second by?
I'll second.
Tim Rosenberg. I think we are a little hesitant to do that motion in second. It's a little bit hard for us, but...
Well, Denise, the challenge is, is that Francine was, was one of the right people at the right time to join this board, and I regret that her personal situation has, has required this, but I totally respect what she's, what she's going to, what she's going through. Our challenge is, is as we go forward, so I guess there will be some discussion about that after this vote.
Yes. Um, we, any other question or comment before we vote? I guess I could share that I have had communication with Francine over the last couple of days, and no one is, you know, I guess we could say the word sad about her resignation than Francine, but I expressed to her that there's not a single person on this board that were we not in the same situation in terms of caring for a parent, that we would do the exact same thing. And I, she appreciates that and knows that she has our support and our best wishes to her and what she has ahead of her with caring for her father. So I guess at this time, we, I told her, I said, "Well, what are you going to do if we vote no? We don't accept your resignation," but we all certainly understand. So I guess at this time, unless there's any other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and, and vote because we have a motion and a second. So upon official acceptance of Mrs. Pratt's resignation, and along with that, a public notification that a vacancy now exists on our board, our next order of business before the board is a discussion regarding our next steps related to filling that vacancy. I'm going to refer to Board Policy BBE in paragraph two, which states that "The board shall appoint a person as soon as is practical to serve until the next school board election, when a director shall be elected for the unexpired term." The policy continues to outline the process that we would follow, and if we are looking at, and so we, we have a discussion tonight about that, but if we align that process to what we have ahead of us in October and November, we could potentially, following the process, finalize an appointment by the second week of November, or on, or at least by the November 17 board meeting. So, but we do have the option of leaving the vacancy open until the April 5th election. As some of you may recall, the board chose to do that when Andy Hosmer resigned, but that was December of 19, or 19, wow, I just went back, 2014, last December, so it was several months later. So the question before us at this time for discussion is, do we begin the process to fill a vacant board member's seat as outlined in Board Policy BBE? Or do we leave the seat vacant and move forward with a board consisting of six members until the April 6th school board election? So while we are not required to approve this decision by a vote, a majority vote, we do need to have a discussion, reach consensus of our next steps because we do need to get started if we do plan to proceed with filling that vacancy. So I will open the floor at this time for discussion, and then I will provide my thoughts in conclusion. So at this time, who would like to start?
Before we discuss, I...
Pull your microphone closer. It's not big.
I think we all know my microphone is fine. So I'm reading the language of the policy. Well, okay, I'm reading it. It says, "If a vacancy occurs on the Board of Education, the remaining members shall appoint a person as soon as practical. It doesn't seem to suggest the alternative you said, which, which we could defer. I recognize that people may disagree on that point, but I want to say that I don't believe that the language of this policy is allowing for that second alternative. It's saying shall, and in my view, I don't think I had to go to law school to learn what shall means, so I'm curious why we think there's an alternative."
To not place.
Yeah, I think we shall appoint.
I know that through legal recommendation, when we went through this process with Mr. Hosmer, that we were provided that option. I'm sorry, I can't give you a better answer than that, the option of not.
And I'm fine with the choice you took then, and I think it had something to do with the really short timeline, which doesn't exist here, but I, at the time, was not a voting member, and if I had been, I would have said, "I think shall only means one thing," and that's what I'm saying tonight. I also think we need the people to do this work. I'm very sick tonight, and I'm here because we have to keep for it. Sometimes people abstain, sometimes people have other obligations. I just, I, I'm going to rest on the word shall, but I think there's a reason for there to be a full participating board.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Shall or no shall, I agree that we need, we need to move ahead with the members so we have a, a full number.
And based on our discussion, I guess I will make the decision if we reaching consensus or not. So it'll be very helpful. And, and I even have a little piece on reminding us what consensus is, if you want me to read it, but I think we...
No, no, that's okay. We're all...
I had to do a little extra research, of course, and have anything else to do. So any, and I really like to hear from...
I, I'd like to hear from everybody. I've gone back and forth on, on that because I know we don't, I know what that says, but we don't have to. And, and really, the, I've gone back and forth on whether we should or shouldn't because then I think all of a sudden, the board and our process becomes the story in Springfield rather than everything we've heard up here. And we be, and no matter what we do, there will be something wrong with what we've done or the process, or who we picked, or why we did it, and it won't be good for kids. And actually, the timeframe isn't that much different. We actually have, when Andy resigned, there'd only be two, if we did everything exactly and didn't stretch it out, there'd only be two meetings different. So it's not like we're talking about a whole lot of time difference. We'd have a, if we could get it done, the 17th meeting and one meeting in December. So really, it's not a whole lot of time. That's changed. And I guess my concern is that each one of us were elected by a number of people in the school district, and when we appoint, we then, I mean, I can't imagine us appointing somebody who wouldn't be interested in running. us appointing somebody who wouldn't be interested in running. I guess we could, but that doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. So we either give that person, we as six people have decided that's the person that should be elected, or if we do something really crazy that, then they have to take the, or the majority of people thinks crazy, then they maybe wouldn't get elected. So, I don't know, it just seems to me that until late night, almost two thousand, this board operated for years and years with six people, and I operated on a board with six people, and we didn't have, I can't remember any time we had an issue with that. So I don't think there's anything magical about seven, because there, for, I don't know, sixty, seventy, eighty, hundred years, we operated with six. And so I don't think that's the, to me, the deciding issue for me. At the beginning, I kind of thought that, but once I thought through it, I started going through all the what ifs, and then I just stopped, because if we do it, there are a lot of what ifs that wouldn't be beneficial to the district, and if we don't, there are probably what ifs, so my, I guess my first choice would be just to wait till April and let the people of Springfield decide who would be the best person, air persons to serve on this school board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lee?
I could call, I didn't even raise my hand. I'm fairly comfortable either way, but my first choice would be, I don't know if there's an urgency to fill it, because we've done that before with six, and just waiting until April for us to go through the process of all the applications, interviewing, to do that. You're talking about into November probably, before we do that, so I, I don't have the, and I see where Jill's coming from, because I had the same question about that, from a shall standpoint, as soon as practicable, but I, I, you know, we've done it before, so I assume we're on good grounds to do that, or hopefully he, we would've heard something legally before. But, I mean, my first choice would be to not, just not fill it and just wait until April. But like I said, I can, I can, if the board's desire is to fill it, I, I'm comfortable with that, I just don't feel the urgency. Yeah, I'm ready. And I do feel the urgency to fill it, if we're gonna fill it, and if we're gonna fill it, the reason for filling it is because policy says so. What Jill said is pretty straightforward, and, and I tend to align with that. I, I've spent quite a bit of time today just on board stuff, and this was one of them, just, you know, where every waking minute, you're walking down the hallway, you're driving in your car, and you're kind of thinking through these things, and I've tried to do some of the mechanics, thinking the mechanics of this, and, and I'm like you, Bruce, I just gave up and thought, "Okay, what does a policy say? Let's follow the policy." Because if we follow the policy, we're on, we're on the firmest of ground. But then if we do follow the policy to the letter, and follow the word shall and, and take action, I would want us to get this thing done quickly, for the very reason that Bruce said, is that we have business to do, and that this is, as much as I, you know, what we said about the circumstances surrounding Francine's resignation, it's a, it's somewhat of a distraction to the actual business of setting up a place where people learn. And if we, if we go ahead and proceed with this, which, which I'm totally good with, I, I give my consent as a, as a board member to do that, is that let's get going, let's get it done, and let's keep moving on. We've got too much other stuff to do than to spend a lot of time doing this.
So we've heard from everyone, I will just conclude. Annie?
Yeah.
She was right after you and agreed with you.
Can you believe I missed that? Could I hear it again?
Would you like to say?
I was probably blowing my nose, I'm sorry.
So, as I stated earlier, I'll kind of come up with my conclusion, I, I believe that this board is established as a seven-member board for a reason, and yes, we did get along with six from January, February, March in the past, I was a part of the board when that happened, but I, at this time, we can go through this process and have someone in place by our November regular board meeting. Now, I've kind of mapped this out, aligned this out to the October-November calendar, it would require probably one special me, excuse me, one special meeting, but I really believe that we need that seventh member. And as far as that, and again, like everyone else, I've thought of a little else about how we're gonna proceed on this, and did a lot of reading and thinking. I think the election in, in April, and who might or might not win that election based on what we might or might not do in terms of this vacancy is another issue, and it could be helpful to someone, it could hurt, I mean, it, it might not be helpful if we appoint someone and then they run for the school board. I hope that whatever, whatever letters of interest we might get would certainly show that person is very interested in the work of the school board, and what's going on in the district, and have some knowledge of what's going on. But it is my personal opinion that we, that we need to fill the position, fill the vacant seat, and move forward with a board of seven. So that's just my thoughts. Anyone want to follow up? So when we reach consensus, it is not that everyone agrees, but that we all reach a decision that we can live with. So the four board members who indicate they would like to move forward with filling the vacancy, and Jerry's okay either way, and Bruce, can you agree with, can you?
Understand, understand your point. I just don't...
And, and that is consensus, is, the beauty of it is not, we all have to agree, but we're all willing to move forward with what we think is our best solution. So at this time, I will announce that we have reached consensus, and we will move forward, and our first step will be a public notice, which will happen tomorrow. Mrs. Luton, is that correct? We have two weeks to collect letters of interest from members of our community, and that would put us to Wednesday, November four, the end of the two-week notice, and then... We have a meeting on Tuesday, the third, but our two-week notice would be Wednesday, the fourth. However, we can be creative on, when we meet.
Have to give two weeks, is that what this says? Well, we're gonna do it then, I gotta stake consensus. Consistently what it says, I wanna do what it says.
So, I think then we would want to look at, we, we have a couple of things we have to do then as a part of, of policy BBE, that we, in an open session, would review any letters that we've received. I don't mean to leave you out, Jerry, I'm not looking at you, but, yeah, that we would, yeah, see, we need to get...
Not for long, I've, I've determined to fill the seat, man. So can we do a Wednesday thing?
We could, I, I think that's something that we will try to schedule, and, and I, Dr. Youngman, wait in here on that.
One option that we talked about, and you tell me your flexibility, but instead of meeting back-to-back nights, could we just move study session to Wednesday and couple them together, right? If you're all available to Wednesday, we can move from that Tuesday, the third, which is our regular scheduled study session, to Wednesday, the fourth, and do both of those things. We can come back for a special meeting on the fourth and just review letters. That's completely up to you, but if you'd rather do it all in one night, I think...
So, I get that all that's important, but the Royals one?
Good to know, thank you.
Just saying. So...
That's very important.
I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
So we would have this, our potential study session on Wednesday, the fourth, the end of the two-week notice, and we would re, we would have our regular study session, and then we would review the letters that have come forward. Then our next step from that is to select a finalist or finalists, and we are required to interview in an open meeting, the finalist.
An open meeting? We do an interview, okay?
And we could do that the next week with a special meeting, and make our selection, and then have that individual seated by November seventeenth. So we can make this...
So with regard to the third and the fourth, because I think you talked about those, unfortunately, I'll be out of town for a conference. I know that's part of, I know I'm being difficult on those things, I just wanted to...
Third and the fourth?
Yeah, I just don't know...
Well, it pretty much says, we...
Wired to interview.
It, it...
Depending on, we may select final candidates.
We may select final candidates, and, but it's, and then these individuals are interviewed in an open session at a regular or special meeting of the board.
That's fairly vague, is what that is, so it may select, will interview.
See, if you just gotta watch that may and shall, may gives you options.
Candidates, plural, right?
Oh, yeah.
So if you select one, you don't necessarily have to interview, I, I, I'm not opposing interviews at all, but I'm just saying, looking at flexibility, you may only get, I mean, one may stand out above, everybody else, I don't want to interview four people.
That's true.
No, you're right, it definitely, with the may, says that. You have a law degree? I, I, I really wish I hadn't said that, because that was just not thoughtful on my part, so I just want to apologize for saying that, because I, well, that was just...
It is thoughtful.
I didn't like how I said it, so I appreciate that you keep bringing it up, my friend. But may means something different.
I think that we have fulfilled our purpose for this discussion, which is that we are going to move forward, and then the logistics and the details and the questions to be answered can come as we...
I think the only question we have to determine now is when we will review letters, that's not, that is a shall, right, so review letters, so...
We need to get that date...
We can stay with study session on the third, however, we would, I think, based on the timeline of trying to make this play out prior to, so that at the latest, we're appointing this person on the seventeenth, that regular meeting, that we would probably need to either sometime that week, review the letters, potentially, you could bump it to the next week, but you'd have to do them back-to-back.
So what is a Thursday, a Wednesday or a Thursday meet? Jill, you're out of town on Wednesday, so what is it Thursday?
Third and the fourth.
On the fifth, it must be a regional meeting.
That's when we have those other obligations to do school board things.
Only other option would be do earlier, right? I mean, we don't have to do it six o'clock, so depending on people's schedule, we could come in at four, review letters, and then go to your obligations that night.
Yeah, but on the fifth, I could do it earlier, if you wanted to.
Four o'clock?
I could.
Yeah.
Over reviewing letters, the letters have to be reviewed publicly?
Yes.
It looks that way from the language.
What's that mean?
Sitting here.
You'll be, you'll be given them to review and then discuss if you want to...
Then we will select finalists from our review.
Finalists or finalists.
Finalists, or...
Either one or plural.
Yep. So we'll put four o'clock on the fifth.
Right, I think you're trying to get everybody there, so I think...
Instead of the third, or in addition?
We'd stay with the third for regular study session and just come in on the fifth at four to review the letters that came in, if that works for, I mean, I think you want all six here, I would assume, so just making sure everybody's calendars.
Can do.
And appointment must be a majority vote of the board, so we would probably all want to be available for this entire process.
And there wouldn't be any votes that night, that would just be review letters.
Oh, okay.
You may select finalists, but I don't think that's a vote either, I think that's a straw.
But you would select the night of the interviews.
Yeah, or the night.
Yes.
And you would actually select the night of the letters, and then actually, you don't select the night of the, if you do interviews, you don't select that night, you do the interviews, and the vote has to happen at the next subsequent meeting, is what the policy plays, so...
That's not the way we've done it before.
Yeah, so the selection process, the appointment will be made in open session at the next board meeting held subsequent to the interview process. Appointment shall be made through a formal motion and seconded and affirmative vote by a majority of the board. That vote must be held in open session, so it's a subsequent meeting, it could technically happen on the same night.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, mine happened on the same night.
We could have a meeting, have our interviews, adjourn that meeting, have a second meeting and be ready to make our...
It kind of depends on if you, where you end up with how many, all that kind of thing, so, but it can be, it's just subsequent meeting.
See, this is why I want to get it done fast. Yeah.
Well, and it may be something we look, we want to look at doing differently in the future, that's how you learn, but in the meantime, we got stuck with what it says.
But we have this policy...
So the key is getting the letters reviewed, and then at that meeting, I think you say, "Okay, next steps are next week, we're either gonna interview, or we're going, and we're gonna set up a one, two meeting, or we're gonna do a one meeting one night, meeting the next night," so you guys can kind of determine that after that step.
But then, how are we gonna review letters on the fifth when there's other obligations on that night?
We're doing it at four PM.
Yeah, I know, but I, so you're...
Are you worried that it's gonna take too long? What time do you have to be, you're thinking about...
Well, it doesn't, that's not, I mean, my whole thing is, do you, does anybody really know what that means, reviewing? I mean, we have, may have one letter, so that may not be a problem, but what if there are ten?
I am doubtful if it will be ten, but...
I mean...
We can do the old, what if there are ten? Cooperative learning activity, where we... Two or three, and then bring those...
Nothing else, special meeting. We wouldn't have any other... We're not moving to study session, okay.
But can we get the letters before we review them publicly?
Yeah, we could post them, right? I mean, because it's a meeting, so we could post those letters.
I mean, that was my thing, if you, if you show up that night, and all of a sudden, you gotta read these letters and qualifications and have discussion, then that could take longer than if you get the letters ahead of time and you're able, I mean, each individual's able to look at them.
With the two-week notice, let's assume tomorrow is the beginning of that day, we would make them due by Wednesday on the fourth, so that we could, or Wednesday, the fourth, like at four o'clock, so whatever we had at that time, we could send out to the board that evening for review, so they have the evening to review, so they're prepared when they walk in at four to converse.
When you walk in, you're not looking at the letter.
We would have twenty-four hours.
But that's better, there and just...
We're not gonna get, yeah.
That's great.
I hope they're running for once.
I think there might be ten, that's a legitimate...
Process-wise, otherwise you're waiting two more weeks.
Exactly.
We want to move as quickly as we can.
We need to put this on the fast track, if we're gonna do it.
So, meeting on the fifth at four o'clock in here, we'll post the, any letters received the evening before, we'll close that at four o'clock on Wednesday, and we'll post that, make that announcement tomorrow morning, so. Everybody good with that? And study session is as planned.
Excellent discussion, thank you. Moving on to our unfinished business, ten point oh one, our request for interest process. We've had a couple of changes since our study session, so Ms. Embry's here to bring those forward to us. Thank you. I will remind you that you did approve this at the study session not that long ago, October sixth, I believe, and it was through the process of working through the real estate agreements and documentation for that, that we realized that we needed to include a couple of paragraphs in the request for information itself, basically referencing that the properties are being sold as is, and also a release of liability. So this is at advice of legal counsel, that we included those in there, so we're bringing it forward for you to approve again as presented, and also want to point out that RB Murray Company has released the information to the public. I understand it was released October sixteenth, and with the sixty days referenced in the RFI, that would place proposals being submitted by December fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Any questions, comments?
So we do need to take a new vote.
We do need a new vote to ensure that we have the appropriate request for information approved, and this is the version that RB Murray is utilizing as they're showing the properties. Any questions or comments about the additions? Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, have a motion by Jill Patterson, that the board approves request for information... Thank you. Have a motion by Jill Patterson that the board approves request for information document as presented. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms., by Tim Rosenberg. And at this time, we'll vote.
I, I don't know if I need to on that, but I did.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to approval of transportation routes.
Ooh, that sounds riveting. Let's do it.
This is some exciting stuff going on now, folks. At the October sixth study session, this was presented to you for first consideration. And the highlights for you would be that this is a routine process. We did discuss that. That seems a little awkward and funny, but it, there's actually a Missouri statute that requires that we have this approved each year. And the important thing to note would be that we have a net increase of two routes. And technically, we added four routes relative to the Fremont shuttle that is occurring. But we found other efficiencies through routing. And again, when I say we, I mean the awesome transportation department. And we reduced to other routes. So this is presented as routine business, but we do need an approval this evening.
To approve.
Thank you.
Second.
That was quick.
Well, my kid rides the bus.
Brain can keep over there. Okay, so we have a motion by Jill Patterson.
Actually, I'm one route.
Annie, okay, Annie Bush, what'd you say? Motion. And Jill Patterson was second, and so we're ready to vote. Did you get both those? It's okay. So did I. It's okay. I think we got it, we got it straightened out.
Sure, I can approve it if you do.
I would.
I had a question on one of the routes.
Voting is complete, so. Too late, Jerry, you can't ask any questions.
That question is closed, sir.
Legislative platform, ten point oh three. At this time, we are going to, do we need to have a short discussion? Or are you asking for us to approve?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. And if there's any additional feedback, you provided this last month as part of the superintendent's report. And said that we would try to move on this. This is the same schedule we used last year as we prepare for legislative session coming up. A lot of conversations, including the, one of the events on the fifth, that we had the little conflicts with. It's a P T A legislative event that night. So we want to be prepared with our platform for that, as well as some of the other invitations that we'll have out to our legislators to get into our schools. Go over those things in the next few, a few weeks as we lead up to session. This represents the previous platform with some minor changes, so what you created last year. And we kind of redid that as we went through the process. Last year, we started with belief statements, state legislative priorities, which are the highest things for us. Some of our positions and then federal positions. Some of the things that I would highlight, just to make sure that you're clear in understanding on that state legislative priorities, the wording and reading, read. You know, we certainly support parents and teachers and additional funding for early childhood programming. The, the last formula or the last expansion actually is taking that out of foundation money, right? So, or it's called, it's not taking it out, it's creating an additional call, right? So that's for unaccredited districts. Original projection that I've seen this year, that I think the department has put in sixty-one million dollar ask for what the potential of what that early childhood could cost, that expansion could cost. Knowing that we're already five hundred million underfunded approximately on the formula. And we've had great years the last two years, which have been a hundred, about a hundred million dollars each. If we had another great year of a hundred million dollars and the call was sixty-one for the preschool, that means that the rest of the state only gets forty for the rest of the K twelve, right? So significant concerns with, while we support early childhood, is it going to have a negative impact on K twelve by using the formula as the driver for this situation? So we added that language, just to clarify, as we go into those discussions, how we deal with that. Other things, the accountability component, and we've talked a lot about obviously encouraging and recognizing innovation and collaboration. And we're seeing those things play out in our district. So taking an accountability system that goes beyond kind of carrots and sticks to recognition of the collaborate, collaborative environment and a supportive environment, as well as innovation, are kind of aspects that we added to the accountability piece. We did pull one off of state funding on the positions. Last year, we had one that said, we support legislation that provides for equal proportion of the formula for all districts. If you remember, we had that one issue and that was solved last year. So that was pulled off. And then the last thing that we added was really the E S E A position. And we know that's a critical importance for us. That's the No Child Left Behind Act. Foundational, it's E S E A. It's eight years overdue. It's supposed to be renewed in two thousand and seven. It's two thousand and fifteen, last time I checked. So it's been out of compliance as lo- longer than it was in compliance. It's, it's moving, although we've had some issues in the last few weeks with the, some resignations and some announcements that may cause it some hurdles to get over. So we're hoping that it passes, but we want to definitely put that on our platform so that we can encourage our representatives in D C to move that forward in an appropriate way. And that's why it does have some clauses around there. Control back to state and local entities, which is in both bills. One of the things that we didn't put in there is kind of the privatization component, but making sure that will be part of our conversations, that we don't want to see the privatization expanded through that. But that'll be just a dialogue, I think, we have with our, our representatives. So those are the recommended changes that I have. And that was based on just a little bit of feedback that I received after the last meeting. Anything else? We can obviously modify during the meeting here before we vote on, but it would, we'd like to get it so we can get it published and ready to go as we move into the session. So. Any feedback or Q and A?
I really like what's, what's here. Just a question, that kind of a, I'm more concerned about what could happen as opposed to what might happen. But with respect to the accountability on innovation and collaboration, with respect to, which I hundred percent support that. But if we get that legislation, I want them to stay the heck out of the way.
Exactly right.
And let us do that without a bunch of strings attached to it. So I don't know how you word that.
I support that language. Yeah.
You know, I, I just, you know, I'm all for innovation, but when you get the innovation, they go, well, yeah, you can innovate all you want to, but let me tie your hands while you're doing it.
That's exactly right.
I don't know how to say that, but I mean, I think, I think what we say is great.
Right.
I, I really support that. I just, I just want to make sure that we don't get a bunch of, they say, hey, we're off, we're with you.
Here's what innovation looks like.
Let me tell you what innovation is. Let it be a local decision on what innovation and collaboration is.
Couldn't agree more. So.
I don't know how you word it or.
I think we cover it with the state priorities, legislative priorities, where we say, we oppose any legislation that erodes the authority of local school boards and undermines the voice of local voters. So it covers it up there. Yeah, we have to make sure there's a condo between the two, right?
Make sure they understand that.
Hundred percent.
Well, they may not, may not, but we can help them.
Yeah.
We can help.
I'm going to stand right behind you while you explain it. Nodding.
How far back?
No, I'll be right behind you, man. I'm not scared of a fight, but. Good luck with it.
For clarity.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Good luck. Tell me when you get back.
Okay. Any other questions or any other comments? We will approve this by a vote.
Can I move for approval?
Then we have.
Second.
A motion, Tim Rosenberg and a second, Jerry Lee. And so at this time, if I can get back to board docs, vote. Thank you. Voting is complete. Okay, moving on to public comments to address non agenda items. Kathy Luton, do we have any non agenda item con- comments? Okay. Okay, report from administration. Dr. Jones, please give us a report.
Yeah, just a couple of brief items. Number one, A P R release is on Friday. So we know that that's coming out and your performance report from the state. And there'll be press release that goes with that. And I expect media coverage. And then we will have a presentation at the study session on the fourth. Fourth, is that correct? We've been tossing so many dates around. I think it's the fourth.
Third, I think.
Third, sorry. Third, you know what I meant. On the third, about what that means for us this year. We're encouraged by the data, I would tell you. So overall, good. Still are always opportunities for improvement, but overall good and, and improvement. So. So A P R is coming out. Also, I would just let you know, some of the exciting things that we've been able to do lately are student advisory council, teacher advisory council and parent advisory council over the last few days. Rich conversations around engagement and the Ignite Initiative and how we can, what we're doing well and how we can get better. Because, you know, every time we have these presentations, there's incredible things to celebrate, but there's a lot of work and a lot of hard conversations going on and a lot of handholding and a lot of support. And it's not always easy. So we're trying to learn through the process from kids, from our teachers and from our parents. And those are great conversations. So cabinet E L T members and myself have been engaged in those and always look forward to using that to grow our system. So last thing I would tell you is posted, and we don't really need to discuss, but this is the updated document and it's also at your placemat there. To take home, make sure it aligns with what your beliefs were, right? Aligns with what you remember from that night from retreat. We will have a test, yes, a quiz later.
Ten point quiz.
A ten point quiz. Kathy and I took our notes from your conversations and modified accordingly. This is not something that we adopt. This is just our protocol and our way of doing business. So this is where we are. If you have feedback, give it to us individually or right now, if you have anything after the meeting. And we'll try to modify it and clean it up so that it's prepared for kind of final. And we'll try to have these at our placemat also, so that you're reminded as part of your board meeting that you have it easily to call on. So. Because it has some board meeting expectations. Jill?
We're just at the disadvantage of no longer having the notes we have.
Correct.
And we don't know where ours are, but at least one of these words, I know Bruce and I had suggested something different. It's not huge, but.
Which one?
The two. We just remember putting something different. I no longer recall what.
Not on.
He and I car.
Perfect. We'll work on and modify.
Not a big deal, but we, we just remember having that conversation.
Perfect. We may have missed that one. So thank you very much.
That was your section.
That's why we need your, that's why we need you to take a one more peek and see if we missed anything. Yeah. We're just using a different.
It was, really, it's not a huge deal. We just specifically remember.
Having that. And I do remember that conversation.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
It was late. Yes. And we'd been a long meeting at that point. So. So review it. If you have anything else, catches like that, we want to clean it. And give us that feedback and we'll make final and get them in your hands.
I desperately want to come up with at least one more change, but I can't off the top of my head.
That, I do believe concludes my update. Legislative update really was part of the platform recommendations. And just a, a breast of the, sorry.
Thank you.
A breast of the updates that M S B A is sending you and your national school boards, because a lot of conversations happening around E S E A right now. Very relevant. So we'll engage as necessary and call on you to engage also. So, very good.
Great. Okay. Any other legislative updates by anyone? Okay. Moving on to Board of Education discussion. So our board comments, and I'm just going to start out quickly by letting everyone know that on Monday, October the twelfth, five members of the school board made a little trip to Liberty and Kansas City, Missouri. And we had an opportunity to see a variety of schools, elementary, middle school and high school, in various stages of implementing collaborative learning and transition from your typical classroom environment to a collaborative learning spaces. I think it's important that folks know and that our community knows that we are working very hard to learn along with what we were asking of our teachers and our staff. I usually have quite a bit of energy, but I was very hooped by the end of that day. I was very tired whenever I got home. But it was an exceptional day. It was a wonderful day to see in the implementation of, of some of the things that we are hopeful will happen in our district that we saw. We went to Epic. And we went to two high schools in Liberty and we went to a middle school, northeast middle school in Kansas City. So I'm just going to open it up. Anyone that went on that trip that would like to say what you, what stuck out to you or what was meaningful to you, please comment. So who would like to start?
I, I was real excited about seeing not only what they did, but what is, that we're already doing too of a lot of the same things that were going on up there. We are doing that. But I also saw a lot of opportunity of what could be down here, particularly as we move forward with facility master plan. As we look forward to how do we utilize our space? How do we utilize our buildings in a much more collaborative fashion of, it's kind of changed my thought process of, of what could be. You know, we've got a long way to go from a, from a master plan. But still, it kind of changed my perspective of what could be with what we have or using what we have in a different way to accomplish the same thing. So I, it was an eye opening experience for me. And just watching the kids work in that collaborative environment was somewhat incredible as you walked through. I mean, most of us went through there. You walked through there and they didn't even know you were there. They were all engaged, focused, doing what they were supposed to be doing and could care less whether we were there. And doing what they were supposed, and it was, and it was, in some cases, it was organized chaos. But you could tell they were engaged, loud and proud in the classroom. And that's probably some getting used to from teachers and parents and patrons that come walking in there and go, what the heck is going on in this classroom? Teachers lost control. They had more control of learning than the other ways that, that we do it. I mean, it was, I mean, we had one that had, what, fifty kids and one teacher? Not because that's the way that it planned. She was gone. The other teacher was gone. One teacher had, and they were organized. They were, I mean, they were.
Working.
Engaged. They were working. They were focused. She was just making her rounds like, it was, I just thought, wow. That's pretty amazing.
Well, it reminds me of the statement that was made up there. The observation was made up there. It said, just because the classroom is noisy doesn't mean people aren't learning. And conversely, just because the classroom is quiet, doesn't mean they are. I, what, what I left, the impressions I had from, from that trip was that these, the difference between these schools and some of, or many of our facilities is these schools were focused on, the school buildings were focused on students' learning. It wasn't focused on control, wasn't focused on efficiency, although we saw one of the most spatially efficient buildings, school buildings in the state probably, probably maybe a little too efficient. And what I also saw was that we can replicate that even in our existing buildings if we just take the risk to be creative. If we involve people who, who can bring those kind of ideas to the forefront. They're, they don't cost more or if they do, whatever they cost appear to, to return in value. And it looks like it's very possible to take some of our existing buildings and rather than replace them, simply make them better. And we can do that in ways that represent a good value of, of our patrons' resources. So I, I was, I'd left, like you, Denise, really beat, but very, very encouraged.
It would seem to me that we saw an elementary school who had fully embraced the new concept of teaching and learning and, and then some secondary schools who had provided spaces for collaboration and collaborative teaching to occur. And I don't, I don't know that we saw it happening. I, they had the spaces for it to occur. So I don't, I, I think that just kind of told me, what you have to do is do some of the things we've done here is prepare people for some of that. Maybe the first thing you don't do is go in and all of a sudden do the space and then expect sudden changes to occur just based on the fact that we've provided a different space in their school. And all of a sudden, it's just going to immediately occur. Unless you start talking with the people who are going to do that. talking with the people who are going to do that change in teaching and just what Nicole talked about, having some of those model classrooms there and some things happening that they can see how it can be done, you better do, to me, that needs to occur first because, um, then you have some, the people that are doing it pushing you to get it to happen rather than us telling them, us telling them, this is what you're gonna do, and we're gonna come in and remodel, and here's how you're gonna do it from now on, um, I, I think that's a different way of doing it, and I thought the, having a school board member there that was a part of your, um, team that, um, just, she, when I said, I thank you for all, for stepping out, she said, we didn't have a choice. We do, I, I think we do have a choice, we can stay in the past or we can do, but we weren't, we're not forced tomorrow to do it, and I think that's where we're in a really good position, I think, to make some of these, to allow some of these things to happen, but to be able to let the people who are really doing the, the work, um, show them how it can be beneficial to their students, and then let them push us to make it happen rather than us pushing it on them, so I, that would, we learned a lot, and it saw a lot of really, to me, very exciting things that were happening, and then some other possibilities that could happen.
You were there?
Uh, I think you can talk about this a lot, but until you see it.
Yeah.
It's really hard to fully explain and to feel the energy coming out of the rooms, and, and every teacher that spoke had such enthusiasm, and the self-regulating of, of the students, the story, and I didn't see it directly, but one of you saw it, where they are sitting around collaboratively, looking at, and weren't looking up, except this one young man turned to look at us, and the young lady next to him grabbed his shoulder and turned him around, so they were regulating their own behavior, not just the teacher, and the story of the child who was blogging and actually had a response from Australia on his blog, and suddenly, there was somebody else on the other end, other than his teacher, looking and reading and evaluating, so when he responded the next time, he had the quality of the writing, the content was much better than before, because there's somebody out there who's reading and, and wants to, and wants to hear from me. Uh, it's just the technology opening up the world to them, but also to each other, uh, the, the, just to watch their little bodies sitting around and, and they're talking and looking and communicating, it's just an exciting opportunity, and I just keep thinking back to the old days, which was, what, two years ago, when we had classrooms with rows of desks, and how quickly that's happened, and also hearing the results, the fact that they can track what the students are doing in real time, they can address it, and the results that they're seeing from that, it's just truly amazing, so I, I'm really, it was a great time, and then I've been to see Sherwood this last week, took somebody over to see it, and again, uh, to see what's happening there, it's just, just beginning, so, great, it was a great trip, very educational.
Uh, Jerry, did you, yeah, did you get to comment?
Yeah, he got to.
Well, it, it was an amazing day, and I think that, I, uh, as I recall, when I was still, I think, in the classroom, the big discussion was how are we going to differentiate instruction? That was the big, uh, words, DI. I mean, we had conferences all over the nation, people were going to, about how are we gonna differentiate instruction. I remember at the time thinking, how can I possibly differentiate my instruction for thirty students at a time with all having, uh, needs from one end of the spectrum to the other, but visiting at Epic, um, it was kind of like a light went off that this is how you differentiate instruction for, for thirty students or more, because we, um, we saw students that were sitting at a table doing work collaboratively, saw students that was sitting at a desk with a book, a library book, in his hand on the floor, reading, that's what he chose to do, and then there was a student that was laying on the floor upside down with her feet under her desk with her device, working as hard as anyone, so, uh, it allowed that, that student, those students to learn in a way that's comfortable for them. Now, that's a step toward differentiating instruction for kids, and I think another thing that will be probably the most difficult, especially for high school teachers, will be that it can look chaotic, and it's okay, because, you know, it's, uh, I was trained, and for many years in my classroom, of course, as a science classroom, I could get a little bit crazier with the kids and with labs, but it was, you're in your desk, you're quiet, you're listening, um, hopefully awake, and that was the way it looked, uh, but that's not the way it looks, that's not the way it looks today, or should look today.
I think one of the things that, that you talked about with the whole differentiate instruction was, it all focuses around that teacher, and if you enable that teacher, embrace that teacher, and equip the teacher to do that, that can happen, but you gotta give them that flexibility and the freedom to do that, and we saw that, where they could do that, and, and so they could differentiate that in the classroom, and, but you can't tie their hands in the classroom to make that happen. It's not gonna happen, so you gotta equip them and engage them and embrace, and let them do that, and let them, you know, true, let them fail some. Sometimes it may not work as well, but you let them go try things, and you let them see what happens, and equip them and support them to do that, and that, that's what makes that happen up there, is, is letting them do that and let those teachers do that. That's where it's gonna happen. It's not gonna happen here at the boardroom, it's gonna happen right there in that classroom.
Andy, did you want to say something?
I'm just saying, one of the things I was pleased to hear is that behavioral problems are fewer.
Oh, absolutely.
Kids aren't expected to sit quietly at a chair for several hours and, and not released, and, um, I was just thinking, um, in nineteen, late nineteen eighties, there was a rook, book written by Faith Popcorn, it was called The Popcorn Report, it was a futurist book, what's future looked like, and the major stories was, we're all about customization, this was the nineties, customer, you know, design your own car, you know, read the magazine, just these magazines that like this little subject area, and we're now in two thousand teens customizing education. A little slow to the party, but we're gonna make it pretty quickly.
Okay, anyone, anyone else, okay, any other board comments, any other visits, or anything else you want to mention? Okay.
I want to make, want to make a comment just about, uh, Francine leaving the board, is that, uh, she brought a unique perspective to this board, and I think her, uh, I assume her perspective was based on her expertise, but also on her experience, and the reality is, is probably her experience was more different from the experience of the six of us on, on the board who remain. I think from, because she had that experience and that perspective, we would do well to keep mindful of that, um, especially as we deliberate on, uh, issues of student engagement and, uh, student achievement, and how to engage families, is that it's gonna be easy for the six of us because of our similarities, um, and our similar backgrounds to, uh, just to come to a quick agreement and assume that everything's cool, but, uh, I'm, I'm ready to, uh, be more mindful, uh, in her absence, because, um, um, the seventh person that, or, or her successor may not, may not bring that same experience that she brought to us, and so we're, we're worse off for that, and so we're gonna have to, you know, one of the things I told people when Jill and Francine joined the board, I said, I'm really gonna have to step up my game with these two on the board, and, uh, we're still gonna have to, we're, we're now gonna have to, uh, step up our game a little bit with, with Francine going.
Thank you. Um, I certainly think that she brought some, uh, great questions to the board, and I think it's things that we will remember and think of and carry forward, um, so, on her behalf. I told her we would do that, so we must do that, so. Okay, um, upcoming meetings. We, let's see, we do have the Hall of Fame Luncheon, Recognizing Outstanding Alumni, we talked about, will be held Thursday, October twenty-second, at White River Conference Room. We also have various activities going on in our schools right now. The boards received an invitation, you might remember, about judging the red ribbon door contest at Delaware Elementary. I've done that, I think, every year. It is great fun, you'll have a good time if you have the opportunity, it's just any time, I think, during the week of October twenty-sixth through twenty-nine, and I don't mean to just be, uh, giving you information about one school, because there's many great things going on, but that, at schools, but that one particularly came to us as an invitation. Our next study session will be November third, and now we have a special meeting for November four?
Yeah.
Did I already forget? Fifth, at four o'clock? Kathy, you'll keep us, keep us reminded.
Need everybody there, yeah.
Okay, um, so, uh, anything else, upcoming meetings? Okay, moving on to our plus delta. Uh, we had several pluses from our study session. We did something really different in our study session, we went to a location, Sherwood Elementary. It was an awesome event, um, because we got back so many pluses that everyone on the board loves that and would like to do it often, however, um, I also know, and we know, that that was a lot of work for several people, and not that they even mentioned that it was a lot of work, but we know that it was because they had such a nice area set up for us, and, um, had our computers there ready to go, and so I would like to personally rec, I would like to recognize Pam Bodine, Pam was a big part of that, Bruce Douglas, is Bruce still here? Did he head out? Bruce? Okay, um, he's probably working on IT stuff.
Deploying another school.
He's deploying. Kathy Luton, who is very instrumental in helping with that, and who am I missing, Kathy? I mean, I know that, there's several others, but.
Staff at Sherwood.
And the staff at Sherwood, yeah. I mean, you have to really pay attention to a lot of details, even in getting a flag into the room where we could say the pledge, so, a lot went on, but we really appreciated it, appreciate that time and effort, and the board recognized that it was, uh, uh, they appreciated that and really liked it, so we're, we'll talk about perhaps something like that quarterly. I don't think we should do that to our staff on a monthly, or twi, every other month basis, but maybe a quarterly, uh, look at that, so. Okay, so tonight, if there's anything that especially worked for you, or anything you think we can improve, please use your little yellow Post-it and put that on the, uh, board before you leave. So we're gonna move on into, uh, se- section fifteen point oh one. Uh, the board will meet in executive session, session following this meeting to discuss personnel matters, as provided in sections one, six one oh dot oh two one, three, and thirteen RSMO. So do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes.
Thank you, Jerry Lee, and a second by Jill Patterson, and please vote at this time. Great, vote is complete, and we will move into executive session. Thank you for attending.